All right, we're gonna call the meeting to order and reconvene in open session. Welcome to the April tenth, Flavanna County Regular School Board Meeting. And Ms. Kreischer, can I get? Uh, excuse me, we'll stand for the Pledge of Allegiance first if you can, and then we'll follow. Can you lead us?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the proud and privileged fans who want to do this to India in individual delivery and justice.
Please be seated. Now. Right to remove certification of closed session?
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. All right, are there any actions coming out of closed session?
There are, Mr. Chair, and I just got my folder, actually, I'm sorry.
I got. A to E.
So I recommend that the board approve student discipline cases as discussed and presented in closed session. Four A through four E.
So moved. And I have a motion to approve student cases as discussed, four A through four E. I'll second in a second, any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? The chair will abstain because I missed some of them. All right, moving on to the adoption of the agenda.
Right, I'm gonna make a motion that we approve the agenda with some adjustments. So in order to make things a little bit smoother and move along today, I'm gonna move that we adopt the agenda as presented up through item six C, the consent agenda, at which place I'd like to move up recognition of the track athletes and recognition of the choir and band students. So that would be six C followed by nine A and nine B. Additionally, I'd then like to move the superintendent's report, item ten A, sorry, can't read my own handwriting. Behind that, for the purposes of expedition, and then I also would like to add an action item thirteen E. Excuse me, I'm sorry, after nine A, nine B, and ten A, we will then have our public comments. And then I additionally would like to add another action item ten E, approval of the revised health insurance rates. Full stop.
All right, we have the agenda to remain as presented up until section six. And we would move subs nine A and nine B following six C, followed by ten A, followed by seven public comment, and then get back to the regular agenda with item number eight. Correct?
Well, and.
And then item thirteen E.
That is a correct characterization of my motion.
Second. Have a motion in a second, is there any discussion? I'm not gonna repeat this one again. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Chair votes aye. We have a new agenda. All right. Onto the consent agenda. Are there any items that board members would like to be pulled separately and voted on?
I was absent in last meeting, so I would like to move that we approve items six B and six C independently, and I'll leave it to others to dispatch with six A.
Okay. All right. Any other board members? All right, I'd entertain a motion to approve item six A.
Make a motion to approve six A.
Right, a second. And a second, we have a motion in a second to approve the minutes of the prior school board meeting. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Abstentions?
I abstain.
Chair votes aye. All right. Onto items B and C, the review of monthly claims and the approval of personnel recommendations.
I move that we approve six B and six C.
Second. I have a motion in a second to approve items six B and six C. All those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Chair votes aye. We are on to item nine A, recognition of the track athletes.
Thank you, school board members. I'm gonna ask for Coach Melanie Kennedy to come forward, and she may have some coaching staff that she wants to invite with her. We have the opportunity to recognize some exceptional athletes, twelve, I believe, some of whom, or maybe all of whom with you. And I'm gonna let Coach Kennedy tell you a little bit about what they've done, but at the end of that, we've got some certi- we have a certificate, and then we'd love to have an opportunity for those students and Coach Kennedy and board members to get a picture up front.
First of all, Coach Kennedy. Yeah, thank you so much. First of all, I need you two athletes to come join me because this is not about me, this is about you guys, so come on up. So these twelve athletes standing in front of you earned the privilege of competing in the Adidas National Track and Field Championship Meet several weeks ago in Virginia Beach. Through their hard work and persistence, they earned their right there, and we had some phenomenal results. We had our girls, four by eight, so the, these four girls right here, they ran in the championship division, which is the highest level of competition at this meet. These girls earned All-American status by their competition, their time there, and then we had Sophie who competed in the open eight hundred. And Sophie also earned individual All-American status for her performance in the eight hundred. Next, we had the boys, four by eight, so if you guys could step up.
Yep.
All right, so these boys, they ran in the elite division, which is right under the championship division. They finished third overall at this level, and they also received medals for their performance. The boys, four by four, so some of the same, yep, we had the boys, four by four, they also competed in the national or elite level. And then you guys step up, and then we had the boys, four by two. So they're very well-rounded athletes here, and they were in the championship division. So, nice job. We also had several that ran in individual events. We had Elias Morris compete in the open eight hundred. Cam Green and Jackson Fields in the open two hundred, and Cam individually in the sixty meter. And then Ruby and Anna, Ruby Fraser and Anna Amato in the girls' mile. So, just a little side note, these kids, many of them run all year long. They run cross-country indoor track and outdoor track. And another thing is, a lot of these kids have been with me since they were in middle school, and a lot of them are graduating this year, so this is this is a very special group of young athletes that you have standing in front of you that have represented our county very well.
Thank you so much, Coach Kennedy, and congratulations to all of you. Wonderful accomplishments. We do have a certificate for you, and then if any board members want to gather around, we'll try to find some way to get a picture of all these folks.
I can slide it back. Dang it, guys.
Can you go be in the front? Where do I go?
Why would you stand right?
Why don't we try to do another row here or something and see how we.
Oh, that's a good idea.
That's okay.
I don't need that one. Leave anybody.
All right, thank you so much.
Thanks for coming out and hanging around.
Yes, sir.
Go on, I'm all for you. Miss Kenny, thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Like it. I like it.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, we can, we'll just leave the podium where it is because we have some more students that we'd like to recognize. So, we have some, some other scholars with us who have distinguished themselves in chorus and band. And Ms. Harkrader is unable to be with us because of some family illness, unfortunately, but Sam Campbell is with us, so I'm gonna invite band director, Mr. Campbell, to come up, tell us a little bit about the accomplishments of these wonderful students. And we will do the same thing. We have some certificates, and then we'll, we'll get a picture. Mr. Campbell.
Thank you, Dr. Kreischer. So we have three students. We have Brennan Pitzala, Summer McGraw, and Jesse Woolston-Hume. Let's say it correctly, close enough. All right, Woolston, correct me.
Woolston.
Woolston.
Hume.
Hume, thank you. Okay, so all three of these kids have auditioned into the prestigious All-Virginia Band and Choir Events. To give you an idea of what that entails, all three of these fine young scholars already auditioned into the district level. We're part of the BOTA, which is our state organization's District Thirteen, which encompasses schools from Culpeper all the way down to Amherst and Buckingham, and in a circle around the Charlottesville area. And they all succeeded in those auditions and received the opportunity to audition at the state level. And again, we're all successful there and made it in. There's a very small number of students throughout the state that are accepted into this event. I, again, this heart creator was planning to be here, I don't know exactly about the cheer results of Summer and Jesse, do you guys know off the top of your heads? In the state? Yeah, so Summer's the second. Summer is the second alter two in the state, Jesse, you know.
I got in off an alternate.
Okay, so Jesse, Jesse's in. The thirteenth best clarinet in the state, fourteenth? So all of these folks did very well on these auditions, and we will go next week, Thursday, Friday, Saturday in Richmond, and they will perform a full concert where they're rehearsing and learning high-level music in the span of three days. Concert next Saturday for an audience there at the Richmond Convention Center, so great job to all three of you.
These board members come around and we'll get a picture of this.
Pictures. Hey, that's Summer. And Jesse, right?
Yep.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
It's a little tighter than the last one. Good job, y'all.
It's amazing, yeah.
So, we're gonna move on to ten A now, and I just wanna remind everybody. I see all the signs and the petitions and stuff, and this is the only thing we're gonna ask, these are the expectations. The signs are fine, you have the right to speak your mind publicly. But your expectation is that you're respectful, that they're not disruptive, and that you don't obstruct other people. So if people wanna film, that's fine, we're filming too, but please don't hold them in a way that blocks other people so that they may have the same opportunities you have, and again, please just don't be disruptive with them. If that becomes an issue, then we'll readdress it. Mr. Grex, we are on to the reports from the superintendent.
Okay, thank you, and I believe we're gonna begin with the slides for the charter school presentation.
Also, Mr. Grex, I just wanna remind you that we must stop at five PM for a separate public hearing.
Okay. It's not, it's not a problem. From my end. Okay, board members, for, for the benefit of everybody, let me just recap. At the last meeting, the board asked me to do a report, an informational report regarding charter schools and specifically a proposal that was presented during public comment. So, from that time, and again, I just wanna, I wanna put everybody on the same page with some communication that I've had with you over spring break. I was not able to get with your legal counsel, which was part of the research that I've done to try to gather this information, until Monday. Which gave me two days, obviously, to put some slides together. There was no way for me to put these slides in the board packet in time to have them given beforehand. And so we had discussion offline, not as a group, but individually, about whether you wanted me to do this in May or do it today. And in order to just continue the conversation and provide the same amount of information to people, you've asked me to do it today. I'm just giving the disclaimer that the reason the slides weren't in the packet is because I wasn't able to put them together really until yesterday and today. And in no way am I an expert on charter schools. I certainly know a lot more about them now than I did two weeks ago or three weeks ago. But this definitely is an ongoing investigation on my part. I'm presenting some information for you today about the way they're defined in code, what kind of processes are outlined in code, if there are timelines associated with those. And then with regards to the specific proposal, some questions that I see surfacing that we would need to address, and from there, I'll just invite conversation from you and any other direction that will go from there. I'm gonna try to operate this from here. What do I point it at? Okay, well, I, so, yeah, I'll, I'll just let you know, and you can, you can get through. So everything I'm presenting is from Article one twenty-two, and it's linked in this presentation. This presentation will be in the packet after today, so all of you can can take a look at it, okay? We'll, we'll go through there in the interest of time, I, if anybody wants me, go ahead. So, I, I've got three slides that just kinda peel apart the definition, and we'll go through all three. The first one is charter schools are defined as public non-religious, non-home-based alternative schools located within a public school division. Go ahead. Charter school may be created as a new public school or through the conversion of all or part of an existing public school, and then this next one is underlined. Go ahead. However, no public charter school shall be established through the conversion of a private school or a non-public home-based educational program. The reason I've underlined that is because one question that has surfaced that would need to be resolved is whether or not the current proposal is in fact a non- pub, is the conversion of a non-public home-based educational program. I can't resolve that for you tonight, but I just simply highlight that that is a question as to whether or not it is. I did talk with your legal counsel about it, and towards the end of this, I'll address some of what they said. Okay. So we'll move through these pretty quickly, but established in code, what are the objectives and definitions associated with a charter school? In order to stimulate the development of innovative programs within public education, go ahead. Provide opportunities for innovative instruction and assessment. The reason I'm highlighting these is because these are where some of the questions surface for us on the, on the, on our team for how some of these things might impact the regulations that we have associated to the SOQs and the standards of accreditation. Provide parents and students with more options within the school division. Provide teachers with a vehicle for establishing schools with alternative innovative instruction and school scheduling, management, and structure. I'm not gonna read all these slides to everybody. Encourage the use of performance-based educational programs. Establish high standards for teachers and administrators, and again, that's another area where we see some questions surfacing around endorsement requirements and certification requirements with teachers involved. And then essentially to develop a model that can be replicated. So that's what's in the code. Let's look briefly at the, the application and approval process. Now, there are two ways to do this. I'm gonna cover the first. So, applications adhere to a format, that's the state is my word, but the state board has a process for processing these applications. The deci- and I just wanna highlight, the decision by the state board, once it reviews these applications. The state board doesn't decide the merit of an application, it doesn't decide whether it's a good or a bad program, one that's good for a community, or, or whether or not a school board should even consider it. The state board process is meant to evaluate the extent to which the application meets the criteria that are outlined in code. I don't list those in here, but I do in a, in a couple of slides, I do give you the reference where anybody can go and look at what all of those are. They're outlined in the code, they're also contained in the application itself. This is just from the application process, I just wanna put this out there for people to see. The application itself indicates that you would allow about six months. That can be extended longer depending on how that goes, and again, I'm gonna outline this in just a minute. And that you might consider allowing about eighteen months from the point that the state board reviews this to the point that something might actually happen. And I just put that out there because I know there's been some conversation in the community about something happening tonight, or some kind of a vote happening tonight, or decisions being made quickly, and you can see the approval process, depending on how it goes, is not one that happens overnight by any means. Also wanna point out, because, again, there's just been communication that has come to me that's been requesting the proposal that was presented during public comment. Why don't we have access to that? Where is that linked? If this actually becomes an application that is submitted to the state, there's a requirement for that to be web accessible. And then it would be. It's not a proposal from us at this point, and it's not, to my knowledge, officially sent to the state at this point, so I don't think it's web accessible, although I do believe the author of it has shared it. So I just wanna highlight that, okay. So this is the process as outlined in code that the state board would follow, and again, this is one of two ways to do this. I'm not gonna read all this to you, but basically, it is sent to the state board, they acknowledge receipt within fifteen days, they notify the applicant that it's, that it's complete, or it's not complete. If it's complete, they move on. If it's, if it's not, then they're given a certain amount of time, thirty days to resubmit or to submit the outstanding information. There is a process for a second request and another ten days, but ultimately, it makes its way to a communit- a committee, a charter school committee. And I can't tell you who's on that committee. I do believe that there is a place that you can access the committee members on the Virginia Department of Ed website. I haven't gotten that far in my research. But that committee is assembled within sixty days, and they begin the process of reviewing, and that process happens with a publicly noticed meeting where members of this, well, in this case, Flavanna, but the local school board, local community staff, family members are invited to come, and in fact, requested to come and give input. If that committee finds that the application is complete and meets the criteria, then it goes to the state board in the form of a report, and that report comes within ten days, and it's also sent to this board. Or the, whatever the school board is in, in question. If it's not complete, then there may be a second committee meeting, and again, the same process that I've just outlined. Eventually, it's either deemed complete and the report comes to the board, and the applicant at that point is able to take a complete application and bring it to a local. Okay? Any questions about any of this? So that's, that is the process of an application going to the state board for review. Is it possible for a local board to do all this without the state? Yes, it is. It is possible. I do have a but there, but let's, uh, let's look at the next couple of slides. I just wanna put everybody on the same page. The code does say that no charter school application that is initiated by one or more school boards is subject to the provisions of subject of subsection C. What is in subsection C? The next slide tells us. This is the section that outlines the process that I just unfolded. So a school board is able to initiate an application that does not go through that review process. And the next slide will give you a couple of considerations around that. Yes, you can do that, however. All of the provisions that are outlined in the code, and here is where you can find those, I've given that link there. That application that lists all of the requirements that have to be included, they, they need to be addressed. And they have to be, uh, they have to be addressed in such a way as it satisfies the requirements as outlined in code in the forthcoming agreement, because what happens at the end of all of this is an agreement between a school board and a charter school organization. So in essence, if this were the route that a school board took, you would be completing the application process and submitting it to yourself. Do you need to use the application that the state gives? It's not, bless you, not required. But that application process already has included all of the required compliance mechanisms, so. However, those are the two ways that that can happen, and applicants can submit it to the state. The state signs off on whether or not it's complete, and then the applicant can bring that to a local board. Or a local board can initiate it itself, but must go through the same application process, although it's not reviewed by the state. Okay? Once it's approved, I just wanted to highlight, these are just a couple of things I'm pulling out for you. If this is approved, within ninety days of that approval, there has to be an agreement that's reached. So there is a contract that comes within ninety days of an approval, and then in the bottom on, I'm simply saying down here that a local board would need to give at least fourteen days notice of a public meeting where there were a public hearing where the public would be invited to give comment before an application were even to be considered, if one were to be considered. So that's just timelines that I'm sharing with you out of the code. As I mentioned, there's several questions that surface for us as a team, and we've not been able to dive into them, to be frank, in the time that we've had the last couple of weeks, one of which was spring break. And this is just a random sampling of some of the questions, and I wanna make it clear, I'm not putting these questions up here to suggest that this is an impossible thing to do. I'm not making a case for it or against it. I'm simply saying that there are questions that we would need to resolve before we could give, before I could give you any kind of a assessment from my point of view as to whether this was something that I recommend you pursue or not. The legal question that I began with in the beginning, is this in fact is what's being proposed a non-public home-based educational program? I can't tell you the answer to that. There are those that build a case that say that it is, and those that would build a case that would say that it isn't, and the courts haven't opined on it. Your, your board counsel believes that it is, and so I think that is a question that at the outset, if there were, if this were something that was of interest in pursuit, we'd need to resolve that from our end. There's several operational questions that I listed just to kinda show the direction of where they're going. A charter school, once it is approved and established, is not a private, separate school. It becomes one of Flavanna's, one of the school board's schools that you manage and operate. And as such, it's subject to all the standards of accreditation requirements and the standards of quality requirements. So there are implications for staffing, there are implications for course requirements, there are implications for services to be provided, there are student ratios involved. And again, I'm not building a case to say that the answers to those questions are problematic, they're just simply questions that we'd have to answer. Are we able with the proposed model to address all of the required areas of reading, math, social studies, health and P E, C T E requirements, counseling requirements? Those are things that I can't tell you at this point what that looks like in the proposed model. But we would have to, this charter school, or any charter school, would be subject to those requirements. Students enrolled in the school, and this has been what I think everybody understands, is any of those students then become public school students, they're subject to state testing, but the issue with state testing is depending on how students do on state tests, as we all know, because there have been schools in Fluvan and surrounding us that have gone into school improvement at the state level. If benchmarks aren't hit and the state imposes those improvement protocol, then there are other staffing implications there. There are protocol with regards to mandatory curriculum and what would that look like in the kind of school that's been proposed? I don't know. I think that's something that we would need to understand. We certainly understand it now. We're very clear on what that looks like for the schools that we serve. It doesn't mean they're going to go into improvement. It, it means that we know exactly what that looks like and we know how to address that. And I don't know that for this model at this time. And I should have said, please feel free to chime in here because we, we, there's been a team of us at work in, this is not, Pete Gretz has been looking at this in isolation. Right now, this, the accreditation model in the state is literally as we sit here, I think, being revised by the state board and the general assembly. And so there is a measure of achievement and a measure of growth and a measure related to attendance. How does the attendance base a required measure? So a certain percentage of the accreditation of all of Fluvanis schools is related to student attendance. How is student attendance measured for the SOAs with the proposed model? I'm not suggesting there's not an answer to that. I, that, that's just something that is an example of a question that I don't have an answer to. Licenseur and endorsement requirements with the proposed model and the, the way it is proposed to be staffed, and I know that that's a fluid thing perhaps, but how would our licensure, how would our requirements with regards to teacher certification and contracting work with the way that proposed model uses, uh, parents and teaching staff in consultation? I, I think that's another question that we would need to address. Special education, I just put two up here, and this is really its own animal because there are so many regulations and Jen Valentine's in here and okay, so I don't put you on the spot, but feel free to, we've obviously discussed this a little bit. The, the big one on the front end is that we're required by the federal government to educate students with disabilities to the maximum extent possible in the least restrictive environment. The least restrictive environment is not what I think it is or what the parent even thinks it is. It's an I E P team decision. And so when students that have disabilities become public school students, that becomes the requirement. Am I suggesting that the least restrictive environment for future students, I don't know who those students are. But is this the least restrictive environment for them? I don't know. That's an I E P team decision, but I think that's an interesting thing that we'd have to resolve. It may not be. The ability to anticipate and provide accommodations. Again, there are I E P meetings that I think would be forthcoming. If students that are enrolled, and, and this is all based on the current proposal. If students that are enrolled are students with disabilities, there would be forthcoming I E P team decisions. And I don't know what those decisions are going to be. I don't know what those accommodations are. I do believe that the funding of those accommodations, and I'm not suggesting they're expensive. I'm just simply saying that whatever they are, the, the support for those financially would fall one hundred percent to the school division. That's not something we would share and it's not something that would be ameliorated through the state's provision through the, through the charter school foundation. At least that's my understanding. That's another question to be resolved. The next slide is really related to some of the financial questions. And I don't know that we need to go through every one of those, or I might just invite you to highlight some of those if you want to. But again, these are just questions. There are questions because I think there are some assumptions that we've approached this with. Or at least some assumptions that, that have been mentioned regarding the financial impact or maybe the lack of a financial impact. And I'm, I think, I'm not comfortable to say that I'm, uh, that I agree or disagree with those without some further investigation. And this is just kind of my highlighting of some of the questions around this. Do you want to go through?
Sure. I started out with using, I'm new fiscal year twenty-three in that first bullet because that's the first, the last complete year that we have, that we have annual school report for. And at that time, the federal funding was about thirteen ninety-one per student. And the, the state funding was about seventy-seven sixty-one a student and the locality provided fifty-three twenty-one per pupil. It, it's true that if we had additional students, we would increase the state funding, but the federal funding is driven by census data. It's not driven by enrollment. So that federal funding really stays about the same. The state funding, as we all know, because when we talk about budget, we talk about local composite index. Although they're going to provide that seventy-seven hundred dollars or somewhere in that neighborhood, it does vary from year to year. The locality is then required to contribute. And for that, for fiscal year twenty-three, it's basically about forty percent that they contribute at the locality level. So that, if using that model very simplistically, it would be a little bit over three thousand dollars per student that the locality would have to contribute. Now, it's true that our locality contributes more than the minimum requirement from the state. And we know that because we talk about S O Qs and, and that we fund at a higher level. We have more teachers than are required, those sorts of things. So that, that part is in there as well. What gets really tricky and very complex is special education. There's a requirement for maintenance of effort. And it's calculated multiple ways, but one of the ways is per capita. And just to kind of give you an idea of that, it's over thirteen thousand dollars that we pay locally for special education. And we can't go down from that number as long as our enrollment stays up. And so what that means is if we do bring in more special education students, there is a greater burden on the locality. Where we at least have to maintain that maintenance of effort with our special education population. The other tricky part of that is we're required to provide whatever services those kids need. And anytime you're bringing in additional special education students, those needs can be very minor in terms of just needing extra support or significant assistance. It might be an interpreter or something like that. So it's just very hard to know what those needs might be. And they can change in the course of a year or two. We see that quite frequently. The other population to consider is if there were English language learners, there would be additional requirements for that. And then also students with mobility impairments, you would have some, some offsets that you would have to do with that. One of the things that I don't think people necessarily understand with special education is like if you're having kids, just having kids come back and forth to school or to a site, if you were doing it at a different site, you have to provide that transportation. The parent may choose to provide it themselves, but frequently we provide that transportation. So there's an added expense on there as well.
So again, these are just, these are just kind of a random sampling of some of the questions. I didn't put an exhaustive list up here. Some of the questions that I think we would need to resolve together in order to really evaluate what moving forward looks like. The last slide is just a couple of considerations for you. The state has an established process for evaluating, again, not the feasibility of a program, not the merit of a program, but rather the extent to which a proposal meets the criteria outlined in code. I'll be very candid. I don't have the expertise to do that. I don't have the experience to do that. I don't think collectively as a team, we have the same level of expertise with regards to evaluating homeschool proposals as this process would bring. That said, if you ask us to do it, I'm going to do it. The final evaluation of the, of this proposal is going to fall to the local board. So whether this would have a positive impact or a negative impact, if it's a good fit, if it's a benefit, all of that, none of that is decided by the state board. The state board doesn't impose any of that on the local board. The state board would provide a report to you. It would be a response to the application that would show you what was or wasn't compliant in terms of meeting the criteria outlined in state code. Let me stop there and invite questions that you might have or any other direction that you might have. Again, this is just kind of a snapshot of where I am with several of our staff members in doing what you asked me to do, which was to evaluate and just bring some information to you regarding charter schools and life prep in general.
All right. Well, members, we have about twelve minutes before the five o'clock required public hearing.
Mr. Gretz, I'm going to ask a question.
Sure.
Reading all this information about charter schools and is that what Abrams Academy is operating under a charter school?
No.
No?
No, not at all.
Just, I was just curious.
No. Abrams Academy really is a part of Fluvan County High School. It's not even its own independent school.
But it's in a separate building.
Separate building.
Like some of this requires, says. I was just curious.
Yeah, no, it, it's, it's not at all similar, but it is in a separate building. Any other questions or any other direction for me moving forward?
I just think we need answers. Heard the word question very, very repetitively. I know I have a lot of questions, so I think before we can make even any kind of opinions or anything like that, I think we need a lot of answers to begin to do this.
On once? Questions? All right. Anything else, Mr. Gretz?
Not on this necessarily. And I'll ask, do you, do you want to pause and start public comment and do the public hearing? Or do you want me to keep going with my report, which is unrelated to this?
Let's keep going with your report. Cause we have ten minutes until the public hearing.
Okay. So actually, sorry, I do want to double click. So is there anything right now? Like I missed last meeting, so I was near, but there was talk of a proposal. Is there anything in Virginia code that compels a school board to act in any way, shape or form right now?
Compels you to act?
Yeah. Is there anything that we must do by according to Virginia code based on this?
Not at this point.
And so the only time at which this board might be compelled to take up a charter school issue is if it went through the state application and two years from now, we get notification that it meets the requirements?
I would say yes, I believe that's true. And that, my understanding is that at that point, you could consider it. If you did not consider it, once it had been through that process, I believe the state board asks you for some rationale. I'd have to follow up on that though.
But.
I think the answer to your question is that there's nothing right now legally compelling you to do anything.
So unless, unless this application goes to the state and comes back, there's no mandatory action on our part whatsoever. Whether a researcher otherwise.
No. Don't think so. So I, I know that, I know you're going to hear from folks about this tonight and there's more consideration. My request of the board would be at some point for there to be some, some pretty clear direction for me on how our team would approach moving forward with research, reporting, collaborating with, with Ms. Berisi and her team and gathering information and what maybe the next step would be for us.
Any other questions?
So the, okay, moving on to the, my report, I won't read this to you. There's several things in here. I'd encourage you if you haven't to take a look at. The one thing I'll, I'll address kind of towards the middle under curriculum instruction are the changes that are happening at the state level. I just mentioned them a little bit. I just think we should all be paying very close attention to that. And in particular, the percentage weights that are being given to the different criteria. Attendance readiness, which is being defined at the elementary level as attendance. And growth versus achievement. We've had changes to head start, which you heard a little bit about in, in closed session and if we, we can reiterate those things, but they're outlined in here. Just want everybody to be aware of what's happening with that. There are some changes that are being imposed in some ways that we are working very hard to continue to serve students that otherwise would not be served. And that's outlined in there. To address some of the things that we've, of course, we've had vape detectors. We just haven't been able to have the, uh, the electricians on hand to install them. They are being installed. We have great accomplishments to celebrate, some of which tonight, we've had our forensics team win their sixth consecutive state title. In addition, we had some seventh graders go to JMU and really accomplish some wonderful results with the kid win challenge, which incorporates STEM activities, engineering design, renewable energy. And then the V R S change that we've talked about with dual employees, that's highlighted in here. That did happen. So we've been communicating with staff about that. The minutes of my last staff advisory committee are included in there. You can take a look at those. There weren't as many questions this time, but my answers are there. And minutes from the most recent March twenty-eighth, I think, learning resources committee meeting are included there. Just want to give kudos to Gemma Suarez again for her work there. She's leading that in an exceptional way. And they're doing some very positive work. And I know they have another meeting coming up. I believe it's April eighteenth. Any questions you have for me from any of that? I, I went through that pretty. And then I think Divers has some things that he's going to share. Are you ready to do that now?
Yes. Um, so I know last time I came here, I came with a lot of problems that we've had. We have some problems and we have a lot of solutions that we put into play in the school system for these things. As Dr. Gretz talked about, the vaping issue is big, but we do have vapor detectors. We are getting them installed, I've heard. There's also a lot of concerns about bullying in the school. A lot of people complained about that and it's not being addressed. We need to address the students that if they're not reporting anything, nothing can be addressed. A lot of concerns about the healthiness of our school lunches. I know that has some part to do with the budget because I've been talking to the lunch ladies at the school. They say they're trying their best to get us the healthiest food they can with the budget they've been allowed with. And a lot of a lot of, a lot of complaints about and concerns about lack of communication between the staff and admin at the school and students. A lot of students complained they weren't included on the emails about changes in school policy and changes in school rules. We're going to address that, send out more emails to students that would like to be included and have more class meetings to share this information with them. That's all. Thank you.
Divers, is there anything that we can do as a board to support you or are there things that, that, yeah, like how can we help enable you and?
I'm sure at the moment I can get back to you on that.
Totally. Just know that, like, you have our emails, please.
Yes.
New email is that again?
Yes, please, I'd actually have this copied if you want.
All right. We have three minutes left, Mr. Gretz, before the five o'clock public hearing.
Do you want me to, I, I can pull out some more things from my report or?
I got your guitar handy.
I don't.
Let's just take a three-minute break because I don't want to let someone start in public comment and then have to stop them for public hearing. So let's, everyone take a three-minute break. It's four fifty-seven now. All right. I call a meeting to order. Please, everyone have a seat. It is five o'clock and we are. Um. Required to have a public hearing for the S R three spending plan and safe return six-month review. Does, does anybody have any comments specific to that issue? Right. Hearing none, we will close that public hearing. And we will move on to public comments. Um, any Flavanna County citizen or employee of the Flavanna County Public School System is welcome to speak. And the expectations are that you address the board. That you don't address individual members. You provide your name and your voting district. That you do not exceed three minutes and that time will be up here on the televisions. Um, and that you're respectful. The board will not interact with you during public comment, but you are welcome to ask us questions after the meeting. And, uh, there should be an opportunity for a second round of public comment later in the meeting. Um, also again, a reminder about the signage. You can, you can have signs. Um. Please no clapping. No hooting and hollering, just keep it respectful. And, uh, don't obstruct people or be disrespectful with the signs. I have. One, two, three, four, five. I have seven people signed up, but just because you didn't sign up doesn't mean you can't speak. So I will start with, uh. Two-hour maximum for the agenda? Yes, we have, that's right. We have a two-hour maximum. Um. So, number one. Ashley Crocker. Board members agree that it's, uh, five oh three?
Hello, my name is Ashley Crocker and I live in the Fort Canyon District. After reading the application and meeting with the applicants, my concern about the life prep charter school are numerous. I will also note that I have heard from many, many community members who share my concerns but were unable to come in person at this supposedly early meeting time. The first and perhaps most obvious concern is that it isn't clear that a classroomless charter school is even legal in Virginia, given that the code explicitly states. That a charter school must not be home-based. If a school is classroomless, it seems to me that majority of the instruction would happen at home. Another concern has to do with the proposed student expense accounts. In the application, it says these accounts can be used to buy books, curriculum, tutoring, extracurricular activities. Or services provided by community partners. That's something that no public school family has access to and opens a lot of questions for me. Who decides what counts as a learning expense? Where is the oversight? It seems obvious that this is an attempt to get paid with taxpayer money for making the choice to homeschool. While everyone should have the option to homeschool their children, if that is what works best for their family, they should not be able to take money from the schools to do it or receive taxpayer money. While there's been a lot of discussion about the budget for this school and how it will provide new money for F C P S, that is misleading at best. Yes, if we start this charter school, it may lead to some current homeschool families enrolling, therefore increasing the funds we have access to. However, those funds will go directly to the expenses that come with the charter school and into those unregulated student expense accounts. Based on the application I have seen and the meeting I've had with the applicant, it is clear that the charter school would need the full amount of per people funding to run the school. And therefore would not result in any new money for our current schools. In fact, by their own admission, if even one student who is currently enrolled in F C P S chooses to enroll in the charter school, that is a loss of funding for our schools. I have many other concerns, but I'm mindful of my time limit, so I'll just say this. As the mother of a child with a five oh four plan currently enrolled in F C P S. I have enormous empathy for families just trying to advocate for their children and ensure their needs are met. I want every child, regardless of their needs or abilities, to have the resources they need to reach their full potential and truly thrive in our community. But the answer to that is not to give up on those kids succeeding in our schools and choosing to isolate them away from their peers and the truly fantastic special education experts we have here in the county. The answer is to provide funding for the one-on-one aides they need, school psychologists and guidance counselors and programs that will help them learn, grow and thrive. I welcome the opportunity to work with the applicants on something like that, but I simply cannot support this charter school. While we are all aware that a vote will not be happening today, I hope that when the time comes for a vote, you will not support the life prep charter school. Thank you.
Right. Next on the list is Georgiana Jocelyn.
Good afternoon. My name is Georgiana Jocelyn from the Cunningham District. First of all, I wanna express my appreciation to Dr. Rets and Mr. Reed for being the only members of this panel to reply to the numerous emails sent by community members to the school board. About the charter school issue in these past few weeks. And past experience as well, other emails to board members have also gone without acknowledgement or replies regarding various other subject matters. As our elected representatives, it is literally your job to represent your constituents. And we need, we need to feel that we have been heard, including with ongoing issues such as the book banning that's going on in the high school. This latest issue involves the discussion of charter schools in Flavana. I am absolutely one hundred percent in favor of advocating for your child and finding the best solution fits the needs of your family. That is your right, and it is the right of every parent or guardian who is willing and able to do so for their child. But not every parent or guardian can attend these meetings. Not every parent or guardian knows what is happening in the school district and how the budget works. And sadly, some parents or guardians don't seem to care. It is up to the schools and the school board to act in the best interest of the thirty-three hundred kids in the school system. To spend the, the budget allocated to them by the Board of Supervisors in a way that benefits all the children and not just a select few. Public charter schools in Flavana will do just that. Take the money from the thousands to benefit a select few. If even one child leaves the public school system to enter the charter, that is thousands of dollars lost from the school budget. As a public charter, their enrollment is open to everyone. It is short-sighted and naive to think that their target audience of current homeschoolers will be the only ones who enroll. And this budget cycle alone, y'all had to outright fire three aides. Restructure other positions and lose a few more teachers and assistants through attrition, which increased class sizes. Not to mention you had to cut the funding for S A T and P S A T testing to the students. You can't pay for all the projects that you already want and need to do for the twenty twenty-four and twenty twenty-five year. Alone, such as renovating the bathrooms at Central, the turf replacement and fixing the track at the high school. Resurfacing the track at the middle school, providing a generator for food storage safety. Replacing the broken playground equipment at Carries Brook and Central. Fixing the school doors and adding metal detectors that were all mentioned in the capital improvement plan. Not to mention paying the employees something comparable to what they can make in the next county over. These are valid concerns. Not some politically motivated drama or an emotional outburst. The people speaking here tonight, the ones who sent in emails and others yet to be heard from, all deserve to be heard and respected by the people that they elected. Thank you.
Right. John Richardson.
I am John Richardson of the, uh, Flavanna District. I live in Virginia during allergy season severely. Uh, my son is currently attending a private school in Charlottesville, top of his class. And we're transitioning him to public school next year. And the parents of all his classmates visibly cringe when I mention Flavanna County High Schools. With good reason. The district's teachers are all underpaid and overworked. Positions are being purposely left unfilled. There's unchecked bullying, food quality problems in the cafeteria. A whole litany of issues are afflicting the school district. None of which we have the resources to address. So I don't understand how it would possibly make sense to divert. Attention and funding to investigating this charter school proposal. Rather than including these children in the existing school framework. And solving the problems that already exist in the school system. To that end, I very much ask you to. Follow Dr. Kelly's advice and just not act on this until compelled to. Because. Charter schools can function very well. And well-funded urban areas with density of revenue and populations. What they tend to do in more rural areas or lower performing areas such as ours. Is they siphon money out of the public system into private pockets. Because while yes. It is technically a publicly owned school, it is. Privately run. And as the previous speaker spoke to. It's a matter of where that funding is going, like the administration cost of a hundred and twenty thousand dollars a year. Or what constitutes a learning fee. Those sort of things tend to be a vehicle for corruption. And. I feel like that model can be summarized best by. A quote from, um. Mr. Danny Reed, who I believe said that right here. With help from others, we will start the most successful and largest education cohort in this county. Stripping budget from Flavanna County Public Schools and stripping your teachers away. Which is exactly what charter schools tend to do. So I ask you to please not entertain this proposal anymore than you require to. Thank you.
Again, do not mention school board members by name, please.
Won't do it again.
All right, um. I'm not sure if I can pronounce this, but. Bill. Mess, Messersmith? Is it Bunting? Messers, not Bunting, yes, I. Okay. Um. I came into this, uh, not really sure what we were doing, um. Seems like, I, I know several members, uh. Will not mention my name, cause that's the rule, but, um. We came in, requested not to have theoretical or philosophical conversations. We don't want facts and figures. Um, but we're purely dealing with a philosophical question at the moment, so that makes it a little difficult to address. However. Um, cause no application has been formally submitted, is my understanding. So everything is theoretical and philosophical, philosophical at this moment. But I just wanna take a different approach and just say that right now, um. Without having what seems to be a clearly defined need. That should be addressed with this purpose, all I hear is. You know, vagaries. So I would say right now, if you look at the most recent numbers that we've got available. From the State Department of Education. Our schools, despite the challenges, are doing an exceptional job currently. To educate our students in this county. Right now, in the most recent available report on, uh, condition and needs that's on the website. Uh, Levana County Schools meet or exceed every standard or every S O Q. That's pretty admirable right now. I don't, there's not a need that I can see right there for that. Uh, when it comes to special needs right now, according to the website, seventy-three percent of special needs students with an I E P graduate with a regular diploma, not a special diploma. That's incredibly admirable. And that's a lot of hard work from our educational system and our teachers right now to make that happen, including eighty-three percent who go on to be enrolled in higher ed. Or gainfully employed within one year of graduating from the school system and eighty-nine percent. Who are in higher ed, a trade school. Or gainfully employed after, within one year of graduation. When you started approaching ninety percent success. In those situations. We're doing something right in our existing structure and our existing school system with our existing educators who are highly dedicated to these students. Um, as we move forward, if, if applicants become available, I know that one of the comments that was made was we really need to focus in on. Comparable situations in Virginia, and the challenge for that is there are no comparable situations. We currently have, from what I could find, seven public charters in the state. One is in Charlottesville, which may be the closest comparable. Thing, but based on population, it's not. Two are in Northern Virginia, which would be D C suburbs. Two are in Virginia Beach, which has a population of four million people. We don't come close to. And two are in Richmond. Two of those seven are also. Designed as. Uh, what would traditionally have been considered dropout prevention programs and not specifically working to address special needs. So. Just think those are things that we need to consider, especially the incredible success that our teachers and our school system is already putting forth, based on the numbers that we're seeing from the state. So, thanks. Right. Joseph. Is it Joseph Creasy?
Good afternoon, board. Uh, my name is Joseph Creasy. I'm with the Alamo District and, uh. I want to, uh, just say that, uh, with Dr. Gretz's. Information this afternoon, uh. We feel that, uh, we have a lot to, uh, be informed about. And he's gonna, uh, get the information back to us. Before we make any determination. And a meaningful determination as to what we need to do. In, uh, our organization. And by the way, I'm, uh. President of the. N double A C P, uh, chapter here locally. That's all we have right now. Thank you.
Thank you. Paul Lacy?
My name's Paul DeLacy. I'm in the Fork Union Voting District. I'm Professor Emeritus of Linguistics at Rutgers and Honorary Associate Professor at the University of Auckland. We've now had thirty-two years of charter schools in this country, so we can ask, are charter schools any good? Looking at the academic research, it's shown that charter schools are not. An improvement over public schools on academic performance. So Betts and Tang, twenty eleven. Found that in some cases they do better and some they do, do worse. And then some they do the same. Uh, Gulisino and Liba twenty twenty comment that, quote, suburban charter schools do not improve academic achievement. And a largely ineffective end quote, but why don't we put academics aside? Monterey at L twenty twenty report that, quote, charter schools increase school racial segregation. For black, Hispanic, white and Asian students by around six percent. The finances, Knight and Turniers twenty twenty found that in Texas, quote, each student who transfers to a charter school. Increases the cost to the state by fifteen hundred dollars, unquote. The Fulco and Reback twenty eleven found that in New York, quote, charter schools have had negative fiscal impacts. Unquote. For teachers, Rohan twenty twenty in Pennsylvania. Found that charter schools, quote, pay significantly less by around ten thousand dollars, unquote. That would put charter school teachers near the bottom of the O E C D pay rank for teachers. And a related note, Jabar at L twenty twenty found that, quote, charter administrators reacted with severity to nascent unionization drives. Harnessing school as family metaphors and at-will contracts to prevent. Union formation, unquote. When I was undergraduate director at Rutgers University, I would have many students come to me. And ask about teaching as a career, and I would warn them. No one respects teachers in the United States, and I would put points at Ichabod Crane in the novel Sleepy Hollow. There's even a story of a ship in the early days of this colony that put out a sign saying, for sale, slaves and teachers. How is this lack of respect shown? Well, in a capitalist country, it's showing by paying people badly. And anti-union activity in charter schools do both of these things. So when I see charter schools being proposed, I think, of course, this is a way to lower teachers' pages and, uh, wages and eliminate their benefits. So basing my view on the academic research, uh, I'm against charter schools in our county and in our country. Thank you.
Right, Andrea Overweg. That's the last one, but just because you didn't sign up doesn't mean you can't speak.
Good afternoon, Board and Superintendent. My name is Andrea Overweg. I reside at Chi-Powatan Road. I have lived in Fluvanna, Virginia for twenty-some years. My husband and I have one daughter who attends public school here in Fluvanna. I want you to know that I consider myself a steadfast and unapologetic supporter of public education. I believe that public schools are the ladder of opportunity from which all children may climb. Public schools take in kids who are profoundly with disabilities, speech, emotional, everything. And yet, privates and charters cherry pick their students, and that's why their outcomes are better. I cannot stand by and believe that we are entertaining taking away from this school district. By enrolling children in a charter school, which is going to degrade our resources and degrade. The quality of the education that we are currently offering. A vote for roughly a hundred students for this charter school is a vote against the thirty-three hundred students who are here and depending on these schools. I am a humanitarian. I care about kids and I care about kids that have IDPs and I have a daughter with a five oh four. So I am very invested in seeing every child reach their fullest potential. My belief is invest in our schools. Our schools are intricately connected to the strength of my property value, all of our property value. So there are many ways in which we can make education in Fluvanna schools even better. But we do not need to squander our time and resources with a folly like a charter school. And I will say, I did look at the application. I availed myself to do it and it was farcical. One point six million, half of the money going into salaries. And then the rest, for what? Play money for people? It was absurd. Hillsborough Charter in Loudoun County, that is one of the richest counties in Virginia. I called my friend. And you know what? She knows Hillsborough Charter. It started with good intentions. They had an old building that was in need of a school. They felt they hated to see it was historic, but it has went the way it's become a mess. And she said, fight this and fight it with all you've got. What are you doing in your county, which she knows our county? Trying to put in a charter school. We have a hundred times the money in our county than you do. And I said, amen to that. I will be there to speak. And by the way, had I known about this charter school last October, November, whenever the board found out, I would have been here to speak before. The time to fight the charter school is now. It is not, it is not fourteen days before you take a vote or whatever. It is now. Thank you for letting me speak.
All right, anyone else wishing to speak?
I'm Jessica Jackson, Columbia District. What really bothers me about this is the children. You all, uh, this charter school wants to take the most neediest children out, separate them away from other children. Hey, we used to do that and that was called institutes. We would put them in an institute. So is that where we're headed? Because the children are different, you want to separate them. Okay, you start with charter school, then I'll be going to the institute. Okay, and even with, and you know, I've, I've been going to these, quote, Learning Resources Committee, it's book banning. And the books last month, most of them were about the LVGQ community. So they're different. So you want to give rid of resources for them. Studies show that children who have disabilities, who are in an inclusive classroom, that means not separated into a school all by themselves. But in the classroom with all students that they benefit. It says that they have positive short-term and long-term effects for all students. We don't need to separate kids. We need to put them together and teach that even though we might be different, we're all children, we're all valuable. And to, um, separate them is, I think is sinful. And I think it shows absolutely no love, no consideration for the children. Also, um, kids with special needs, um, who are in inclusive classes are absent less often. That's research. They develop stronger skills in reading and math. They also more likely to have jobs and pursue education after high school. So if you take them out from inclusive classrooms, then you take away all the positive benefits. I was reading the paper and some of the reasons that was said for the charter school was just laughable. One was, um, said that, um, it would benefit the schools because we would have fewer students. So that classrooms are small. So you want to take away the most neediest people so that we can have smaller classes. And also it utilizes, um, parents as resources. We already utilize parents as resources. They come in and they, they read to students. So that's nothing new. It says it would promote innovation. So are you seeing that the teachers now that they're not innovative? You just heard all the statistics about Fluvanna's success, but the worst thing about this all is that you wanted, that not you, but hopefully not you. But the people who want this charter school, they want to take the neediest kids and separate them from everyone else. You want to tell them that they're different and that they're inferior. That was way back then and we should never do that.
All right.
I'm Eric Anderson from the Cunningham District. Uh, in contrast to some of the other speakers here, I actually have strong experience with and a very favorable impression of homeschooling. I have worked with charter school programs that do amazing things. But I have to caution what this means in the context of Fluvanna County and the reality we're dealing with. The places I've worked that had really cool, innovative, great, uh, charter schools have been school districts or school divisions with. Five, ten, twenty times the enrollment that we have. We're really kind of small. A fifty thousand student school district can afford to build a separate school and do something cool and work on teamwork or computer skills or something special. Um, I think there's not really room for it here. We have trouble enough dealing well with the stuff that we got to deal. In terms of homeschooling, I think homeschooling is a fundamental right that parents should have the right, do have the obligation to direct the education of their children. But doing it with government support is intrinsically going to lead to government interference. Finally, I'd say that the specific proposal, and as far as I know, we don't have a formal full proposal available for the public. There's all kinds of informal drafts and stuff circulating around. Doesn't look like anything we could support. It, as a home-based program, it's explicitly in violation of the homeschool policy that's in the packet for this meeting that says we cannot support home-based education. It's marginally in violation of the religious exclusion for, for charter school things. It doesn't seem like anything we could legally support and fund in this county. Um, proposing to set up a framework that would allow charter schools is fine, but the proposal that's on the table now looks like. Millions of dollars, most of which goes to administrators who rarely even interact with children and don't teach them directly. And the rest to hand out, free money for the government to people for doing stuff they're already doing. So the proposal, as I understand it, and I'm looking forward to finding a real, you know, real answers that people have asked for before. Proposal, proposals, I understand it is not worth doing, but the idea that we should completely ban work against this thing, uh, that's not, that's not where I stand. So you need to look at the proposal, think about it really carefully. How does it fit in with our budget? Is it fair? Does it meet our needs? Is it legal under the Commonwealth's Code before you move forward? Thank you.
Hi to the Board. I am Christian Pilberg. I live in the Cunningham District. I also want to voice that I don't support the charter schools. Uh, I didn't plan to say much, but I do want to comment on a couple of the things that people went over regarding the funding. It does seem to me that, uh, being ignored but by people who are supporting this is the economies of skill that we get when we use money and. In the same pot. So if we're splitting up that money to a different pot, then that's less money that can go towards a lot of things that we can get. For one group, but not if they're in another location. That's important and that's something that, you know, I've been in Fluvanna schools since I was a child and I. Have always known that Fluvanna needs a little bit more funding, so I don't want to see any of it go away. Thank you. And I'm not being rude, uh, my kid has soccer, so I'm leaving that.
Right, anyone else?
Hello, enjoy, Creasy, villain in the room. Um, I just want to tell you guys, thank you. I have been so impressed with the staff, Ms. Gillum, Dr. Gretz, Ms. Valentine, all of the board members. I, when I brought the proposal to you guys and I specifically asked last month for you guys to initiate it, that is what I hoped. I. I'm tired and I just didn't want to go through the process of, of submitting it to the state. But when I spoke, um, with Dr. Gretz and Ms. Gillum, they mentioned that there were several. But financial questions that, uh, we needed to answer, legal questions that we needed to answer and. I'm happy to go through that process. We can go through the state process and, um, I, I think it's great. So I, that's how I would have meant my request is that you would wait for me to submit it to the state. Um, but in the meantime, I just am so appreciative that you took the time to consider what I asked. Um. I think that it's important that we get these conversations out, uh, for discussion. I know it's difficult to have conversation in a room like this, but the people who have reached out to me have been willing to speak open, openly, um, about ideas and suggestions. And so I appreciate that as well from the community members. So I, I'm thankful to live here in Fluvanna County. I obviously don't want to move to another county to get, excuse me, um, the support that we need for our children. And I'm confident that working together with Ms. Valentine, Dr. Gretz, Ms. Gillum and the Board will find a way to support our kids. Um, in a way that would be best for them and lead to the outcomes that we need for our county. And I'm sorry that I got emotional. But, um, but I just will end with, uh, telling you, I will continue to work with you. I will continue to look for solutions as, um, Ashley and Georgiana and others have requested me to do. And, um, I appreciate that you guys are willing to stand up and, um, help us look for solutions in the future. So thank you and I look forward to working with you.
Right, anyone else? Anyone else wishing to speak? All right, we will close the first round of public comments. And we will move to. BSBA Fluvanna Policy Updates First Review, Item Ten Subsection B.
Thank you, Mr. Bullen. Uh, members of the Board, you'll find in your packet, there's several policies for you to consider. The majority of these, I'm happy to answer questions that you have. The majority of these you will have seen are, the changes are either semantics or in some cases it's capitalizing a word. It was. Uh, beforehand not capitalized ironically, and not to make light, but I do think it's ironic. That, uh, the VSBA has this month included in its round of policies for you to consider. A revised learning resources policy, which you just went through the process of revising. Um, as well as a, uh, an update on the policy for charter schools. The policy for charter schools, the change literally is changing the word from regulation to procedure. That's it. Uh, and yet it finds itself on, on the agenda tonight. If, if you have any questions for me, I'm happy to answer them. My suggestion to you, and again, I'm happy to have a conversation, but. You've been through a process of revising the, the policies that you already have related to. Uh, evaluating learning resources and handling complaints from community and family about learning resources. And you have your own policy now. The VSBA, as you know, releases its own policies. The, the revisions to these policies are not related, they're not substantive, first of all. And I guess what I'm saying is because you've just been through this policy, uh, process. And you have a committee that's currently working on submitted complaints. I don't recommend that you change this this month, and I would recommend that you just pull those. Uh, and again, you're not, sorry, you're, you're not, uh. These are just first readings, so you're not, you're not passing them tonight anyway, but I just wanted to mention, those are on there simply because they're on a list that the VSBA. Sends each month that they're, they're not on the list because of anything that's going on in this community related to learning resources. And my suggestion would be to wait until, uh, later in the summer to address those. But any questions you have, please. Please ask.
How about the VSBA twenty-four Policy Services Agreement? It says first review, but it is also on the, it's also set as an action item.
Yes, sir. So each year, the Board has an opportunity to approve entering into this agreement with the VSBA. One of the services that the association provides the division, divisions in Virginia is. The revision and the update of, of, uh, policies as laws change, as legal references change. It's an extensive amount of work. It's certainly work that we couldn't do in-house. And so I, I recommend, as I always do, that you continue to partner with the VSBA to get that done. There are some school divisions, uh, huge ones, that do employ their own attorneys and staff of attorneys. We're certainly not considering anything like that. So I, any questions you have about this, I'm happy to answer. Something you do every year and I recommend that you do it again.
Um, every year I've been on the Board, we've discussed this in depth and, um. I'd like to table it if there's two other members willing to, uh, do so until we can have more discussion. He needs to know something by April thirtieth. Are we, we, I don't know some plans?
Uh, well, I do. I mean, I, I can certainly ask for an extension.
You know, we have this discussion every year and it's always the same outcome. So. Yes, there are people seated around this table who have articulated that they don't enjoy the, like, professional or advocacy organization, the VSBA. But to their credit, whether or not you agree with that statement, they provide updates that keep our policies in alignment with Virginia Code. They do the legal work such that we don't have to and are like continual comparison against replacement is that honestly, this is a steal. I don't know why they're not charging more for it. And, um. While I'm always open to new ideas, you know, we've served together the last five years and I just haven't heard one. So I don't know why this is any different and I don't know why we drag our feet for it for some like hypothetical. You know, aha moment. If we find, if we find a better alternative in the interim between now and next year, then like, let's bring it. Early on in the, in the year before the renewal, but I don't see a reason to let our policies lie just because we're. Not thrilled with the organization as an organization. The, the core function or product that we're getting is honestly invaluable.
I would argue that there are alternatives, but I don't, um. I have enough members to support my opinion in that right now, so we will.
I would entertain for, under unfinished business, any month between now and the next time that we vote for this. If you have alternatives you want to, like, shop. Like, I'm open to it. If it's, I don't care who it is that's doing the work. I don't care who the author is, as long as it's legal, it's good guidance, it's in alignment with Virginia Code. And it's timely, like what we're getting. Like, if you can find the same thing for twelve, twenty-five hundred bucks off the street and we're confident that it's the same product, let's go nuts. But. In, until then, I just don't know why, why we want to continue.
I myself, I don't particularly care for VSBA, um, but they do, uh, reasonable service in this situation for the money. That it would cost the school system more if we did it ourselves.
Any more questions about the VSBA Policy Services Agreement? We're moving on to the fiscal year twenty-four budget update with Ms. Gillum. Slides.
Now, it's, it's this. So you have in your packet, the most current budget update with expenditures and revenue. And I did, I kept promising you that you were going to see more federal revenue. And we did the state, the federal, state through the feds ended up catching up with that. So we are seeing that revenue increase dramatically over the last couple of months. I'll try not to use bad words, but the state released the caboose bill a few weeks ago, right before spring break. And in the caboose bill, remember that they can change the allocations for the current year, not the next year, the current year, the one we're in now. And they have reduced our revenue for state funding by $883,000 for this current year that we're in. And you're going to ask me-
I'm sorry, Stacy, can you scroll down so the revenue comes up? Thank you.
Now you're going to ask me, well, what are you going to do about that? And I have, we have been going through the budget. One of the big things that we've done is stopped spending on technology. There are some technology purchases that we felt like we needed to make this year. But if there were any purchases that we thought we could hold off on, then those are, are tabled until the following fiscal year. I do think that this could have an impact on, like if we had an open position or something like that, then I'd, I'd basically just absorb those funds into part of that offset. We already knew that it was going to be reduced when they did the all-in money. Basically, they took some money from us when they did the all-in money. It was about $400,000. But then they took more money when they did the caboose bill. What they're basically saying is they've reduced basic aid and they've reduced the sales tax number because they're, they're still projecting that sales tax is going to fall below what they have projected. But the problem that I have with that is they're running billions of dollars of surplus and they keep projecting that the bottom's going to fall out. And then all the, the pundits come in and say, but that's not what's happening. And so the reality is they think they're going to run low on sales tax at some point. So they've cut us in an effort to offset that when it happens. The governor, he could change the caboose bill or make modifications to it to and ask the general assembly to look at it again. But at this point, I don't have any indication that that's going to happen. We did talk to some of our neighbors. I think a lot of them were concentrating on the fiscal year 25 budget and didn't even look at the 24 till I called. And I said, hey, did you look at this? And they're like, oh, my gosh. So it's, it's a pretty big hit for us. But I think, you know, this is one of the reasons where I try to be really conservative as we go throughout the year. And you know, people know that I'm more inclined to say no at the beginning of the year because I don't know what's going to happen at the end. And so I think that we're in good shape. We're not, we're definitely not going to exceed our expenditure authority. It may impact whether we're able to make a payment into the health insurance claim fund though, because I think we may have to use some of the funds that I had budgeted for that to offset this change. And I'll know more, you know, as we continue to go through this year. I'm happy to try to answer any questions you might have.
The only thing I'd add to that, thank you, Brenda, the, the, it comes up every year, there are questions about with a $50 million budget, turning back a million dollars or 1.5 million dollars to the state. The, the reality is if we don't keep around 1% contingency towards the end. I mean, here we've just found out in the middle of April that we're going to get almost $900,000 less in state money than you budgeted at this time last year. You better believe we're going to try to have about a million dollars at the end of the year.
So, sorry, to clarify, that was returning to the county.
Yeah.
That's all right. And you also, Ms. Gillum, I, I didn't hear a unkind word in there. I'll use the word hogwash. It's probably about as nonsensical as I'll get today, but like-
Dr. Gretz has heard my potty now.
This room has heard me swear before. It won't be, it won't be tonight, though.
I've had time to process.
But I mean, is, maybe my years are running together, but is this the year where we're going to have a budget until October also?
Yes.
So we didn't have a budget until October and then surprise, here's some semi unfunded mandates for all-in. And by semi unfunded, I mean, we're going to steal from this pot, fund it or fund some of it. Now they're like, hey, J K, we're just going to take 800, 900 K off the top. And yet somehow we're luckily able to manage and try to return some amount of money back to the county at the end of the year. It's just, it's a fairly grotesque moving target and I'm shocked that you're able to manage it. So thank you for what you do. The state has just been a hot mess this year on educational policy, on education funding.
This is really, really frustrating. I, you know, about half of our funding comes from the state and to do something like this at the 11th hour is, and, and it would be different if I saw that these things where, you know, we're in this, you know, horrible situation in the state, but every meeting we go to, they talk about the surplus at the state level. And so why they think that it's okay to cut us by this amount of money so late is just ridiculous to me. But that's my grandstanding.
Yes, that discontinuity aside. So I heard something interesting in conversations with you over the last couple of weeks. So I wanted to clarify, and it's not to like all on the county or anything, but like when we make a budget proposal and, and the county says, good to go, here's your funding, that is effectively backstopping or granting us expenditure authority up to that number.
Yes.
Which is unrelated and separate from how much money we actually get from the state and federal government.
Yes.
So it is a felony if the school division overspends their expenditure authority. You know, it's a felony for Pete, it's a felony for Andrew. It would have been me last year because the board chair is also on the hook. But is the county not theoretically responsible for that gap if we spend over what we receive, but not over what we were allotted through the budgetary process?
Yes. So once the county appropriates the fund, so they've appropriated 57 million, 912,113.50, we can, we're allowed to spend that amount, not a penny over, but that amount, regardless of whether that revenue comes in. But what we do, because we're being good stewards of the taxpayers' money and understand that we all live in a community together, when we see that there's going to be a shortfall in state or federal revenue, then we make sure that our expenditures aren't going to exceed that revenue. And so that's when, that's when we start making tough decisions, like, well, we're not going to buy this right now. We'll just wait. We'll put off, we'll put off doing that thing. And that's how we've operated since I've been in this position so that we don't have to go back to the county and go, by the way, I need another $800,000 because we're short. I say all that because right now we are, this budget is really tight and it, I don't sleep well all the time, but I feel like we're in, in good shape when I was able to look through everything. And I definitely appreciate the help of my colleagues and helping to review all of that.
We have a phrase in industry for this. It's called building the plane while you're flying. So, you know, we're, we're lost to the tune of 800 K in this fiscal year. I'm reading, you know, the articles out of Charlottesville and Abomar about their 2025 budgets and them being short nine and 12 million dollars. How much is a county like Charlottesville or Abomar shorted this year that they have to make up in addition to their 2025s?
It's hard for me to say. One of the other counties I talked to, they, it was a much smaller county. They were telling me theirs was more like 100,000. So it's, it, it really varies a lot. And then just depending on the county and how much sales tax they're getting. But I would, I would guess that with a larger budget, you have more leeway with a smaller.
Questions? All right, fiscal year 25 budget update.
So we've, we've got, we've gotten a template. We have, and the governor has reacted to that and sent some information back to the general assembly. He too is now recommending a 3% increase. So it, it, I feel confident that that 3% increase is going to happen. And it's for, for all state and school employees. So I do have, I do have additional information. I, I did the, the, did a handout that had all the salary scales in there. So those would be our salary scales. I had hoped to have information to even close with a contract list, but just the timeline was too short. I couldn't get it together that quickly. We will ask that if the Board of Supervisors continues with what they sound like they're willing to do with fully funding our request, I would ask that we, when we come together in March, we, or May, when we come together in May, that we would approve that contract list so that we could issue contracts that second week in May. I had hoped to be able to do it earlier, but it looks like that's not really something that gather this quickly.
Is there a compelling reason why we wouldn't need to meet earlier in order to afford you the showtime?
Typically, we've done them in mid-May. So I, I think we'll be fine. And, and you know, unless there are some concerns, probably what I would do is prepare the contracts to go out. And then after the meeting, basically press send. I don't know if there was anything you wanted to add on there. We are continuing to analyze positions and have been able to, to make up where we had to make cuts through attrition at this point. We still have a couple of things that we're looking at with that. The one thing that is in your packet today that, that we want to reflect on is the health insurance rates. I would like for you to approve those tonight because that would allow me to share the rates with our third-party administrators so that we could start doing the open enrollment sessions at the beginning of May. Because we do that at the beginning of May and then we, when we run our June payroll, that's when we, when they start to pay the new rate. But it allows us to get all the open enrollment done before people leave. And we do have a practice here where we don't, we ask people to sign up every year, not just to make changes, because I find when, if you just allow them to make changes, then people forget. And then they call back to you later and go, well, wait a minute, I didn't get this done. So just trying to make sure that we get on top of that. So I would like for you, at this rate sheet is based on what we discussed in terms of no increase on the employee side. And the employer side would pay the difference with what we're seeing there.
And so this rate sheet, then if we pulled one that were dated in April of 2023, every number should be identical.
The employee number would-
The employee number, of course.
Not the employer number.
Yes.
And the, and then related to that, we've been working with our provider on some of the charges and just trying to see if we can have a smooth transition as we move to Centerra Health and work, we're working on that contract with them as well.
And to clarify, our, you know, our, our colleagues formerly down the hill, now in Fork Union currently are having a budget workshop session right now. If we approve this tonight and then the number that they're working with is reduced, if they cut from us, we then can't go back and pass on, we would have to find other places to cut if they don't fully fund us. Is that correct?
I wouldn't recommend going back to this, but it's not that you couldn't.
It would definitely be really hard to do and hard on the employees.
I just wanted to make sure I understood the terms of the vote.
Sure.
I will say that it's, I'm, you know, I'm looking at the top line here on a $500 deductible plan. I am remarkably conservative myself on, as it relates to insurance and offsetting risk. And when I see 877 for an employee family plan and I put that in juxtaposition to our starting teacher salary, I'm, I'm just kind of left with whiplash.
Any questions about health insurance? We do have a, we have a template from the General Assembly for the 25 budget and that looks favorable at this point. But I'm going to reserve any comments on that until I see the finalized template.
You mean until we get an actual budget in October and then they take a million dollars from us?
It sounds like this process is going to move a little quicker. There wasn't a veto and just more. Sounds like they'll come back into session, but it does sound like this one will move. Reading, is that what you're seeing as well?
Oh, yes, absolutely. And I think it'll ultimately, I think it'll be a positive.
I'll choose optimism.
Any more questions about the 25 budget? Valentine, are ready for the special, special education annual report?
And you go to the PowerPoint first. So I'm the same thing I do with you all every year and it's the same as it was previously. We put in for 10, and it doesn't pay for half of what we do, of course, if this is our local money can't spread out. So we put in for 10 positions. Thank you, Brandy. Thanks, God.
It's Stacy.
Stacy, sorry. Sorry, I'm directing branding. Personal services, salaries and wages paid to employees and then of course employee benefits. So there's just really the two lines. Next slide, Stacy. And this is what we have. I don't know why I left it in yellow, so I apologize for that. But we put 75% in personnel services. We've changed that over the years. You know, sometimes it's been 78%. For an enough, I've decided we're going to do 75 and 25 and stay with that consistently. But this is the amount. And that of course is for 611 and then 619 is our preschool funding. And our preschool funding barely pays for a half of an AIDS position. So that's the annual plan that it is. The other thing in here is PSA, which is the proportionate set aside for private placement and homeschool children. And we fund speech and consultative services. And then we've also done PT and OT if that's been for a child. So that is the basics of the plan. It is all of these pages and really it's only about six pages that are actually something you need to look at. I'm happy to walk through it with you. Look at the whole thing, but that is basically the plan in a nutshell. I didn't make any other changes. You'll see, you know, the numbers change on one page each time. But this is all primarily directions for us. We continue to provide everything. And of course, we say we did what we said we were going to do last year and we do that. But we just continue to work to make improvements to see what our kids need. And this is just one part of that, that doesn't fund all the things that we actually do that works to make happen for us.
This is the most frustrating thing. Get about $850,000 and we spend about $8 million on special education. But we've been the definition of an unfunded mandate right here.
And we've been doing a lot of things and we're filling in for areas that, you know, the county with limited resources has. For example, Parks and Rec does a great job. They have certain events throughout the year. They invite us to the fair where they invite students with disabilities and individuals with disabilities to the community fair and do some special things for us. But with, you know, our CAC, which is our Special Education Advisory, which means the third Tuesday of most months. If you want to join us, it's virtual and online. And so that's where we talk with our parents about what do we want to plan for, for our students. And so we put the adaptive activities coordinator in a few years ago. We put the transition specialist position in a few years ago. We're right now just trying to maintain what we need basic staff. When Mr. Rittenhouse was at our CAC meeting last week, he got to go down and see the clothing closet, which is actually the mental health team's project. What our students with disabilities in self, in classes are actually running that and opening that up to the public. And then we have the homeless food program that we do for students that again, our special education students are doing because we're trying to make real life work experiences. We do those out in the community all of the time. I think someone thought someone was getting their hair done with a county car, but really it was that we had a student placed at the beauty shop. So I promise, no one's doing that. It really is legit. And we're looking at all of our local businesses in terms of how can we really give these kids real live experiences. Today we went to Walmart, had the kids on a field trip there where they make menus, they create- Today, we went to Walmart, um had the kids on a field trip there where they make menus, they create what they're going to do and how they're going to have those life-scale practice things. And so that's part of all of that, budgeting, things like that. Any questions?
I appreciate you letting me sit in on your meeting uh previously, and I was amazed and real, you know, I put all the services that are provided or that are available to people that need it.
It it's really what we find is we're trying to connect parents with services that, you know, they might not know about. They might not know about vouchers and the process. It's so not the school system, but the process for these things that they need for lifelong situations with our kids. So trying to at least put people in front of them. Um our next thing should be social security, but um they don't work past five o'clock. So I can't get them to come to a seven o'clock meeting, but we're gonna try and figure out how to get that for parents.
Field trip sounds fabulous. I I feel like every student in the high school should be responsible for making a and I know that they do in their finance classes, like make a budget, but like, you know, with with the cost of food these days, um imagining what a, you know, I don't know, three dollar per capita dinner might look like and then going to the grocery store and seeing the prices. Again, you know, whiplash and or sticker shot. I mean, I I think it says it all when I was on Reddit this morning with my morning coffee and it was like, you know, the the Gen Zers new splurge groceries, just like.
Well, and having conversations even with staff in terms of okay, you're gonna see some potato chips that we bought because they're packing lunches to go to jobs. And so they bought a little package of potato chips. So having to have those conversations that, you know, we buy the big package of potato chips and then we use our gloves and we separate them in little baggies. So then we pack our lunches that way, because it's nice to think that everybody can afford all of those little tiny individual pack granola bars. But that's not practicality for life. So we need to be able to teach what is. And maybe they'll be able to afford those individual packets, but I'm trying to work on things like that, too.
Life goals.
All right, anyone else? Thank you, Ms. Valentine. All right. Moving on to unfinished business, is there any unfinished board? Is there any new business?
I have a question, Mr. Gretz.
Sure.
Can we we find some time um to speak to the school board attorney about the legalities of removing comments or hiding social media comments or anything like that on the social media page? I bring that up because there's a question, and I just recently saw, I, none of us, if we have an official page, are allowed to to do that. I don't know what the legality is.
I think I know the answer, but I'd I'd prefer to like hear a little more about the context and and I'm happy to either do it on your behalf or connect you with Mr. King.
How is the?
I'm sure I've done that.
Can I clarify for a second? So um is is it about specifically the Pluvana County School Board or s- uh public schools thing and comments that are made on it?
Yeah, people are, yeah, I've I've gotten comments about people upset that something was hidden, their comments were stopped or whatever. I don't understand all the terminology and how that works, because I I don't do that. Uh I know that you can, you can delete them or hide them or pause them, not not allow it at all. I just know that um a lot of people have had issue with that. And I recently saw a Supreme Court decision that said that certain groups that were publicly funded couldn't do that. So that was.
Yeah, I I'm I'm not familiar with the specific complaints. We can talk about them. My understanding is that with with a page like, so for example, the school page or any visual school page, you can, you don't have to allow comments. If you allow comments, you can't censor comments.
Yeah.
So you can't, you can't allow comments for one post and turn them off for the next post or turn them off if they start saying something you don't like.
Toby, you all are.
Unless, I mean, there there is some sort of provision around something that's, I I I don't even wanna. There's certain comments that I think you can shield if they're particularly offensive, maybe, or disruptive. I can't remember how that's worded. I'm happy to research that.
I think when it originally came up, one of the issues we were having is not have staff that could police that twenty-four seven.
That's impossible, yeah.
Yeah, and so.
You don't have to allow it.
Well, that that's why we.
Do allow it.
That's why we hid the comments, because we were like, we can't be on there all the time to check to see if someone's saying something they're not supposed to be saying.
On social media for almost twelve years and it's a full-time job.
Currently don't have a press relations person here.
It's one of the many hats. All right, any other new business? Moving on to action items, uh letter A is the approval of grades four to five literacy curriculum textbook adoption.
Any questions anybody has for me? It's, we talked about this last month. It's uh, nothing's changed. You approved the committee. The committee has done its work. They were available for public review. I'm happy to answer questions, but nothing's changed with this.
All right, I'll entertain a motion. Just thank the committee for their hard work. Then flip forward to supporting.
Yeah, I move we approve the grades four through five literacy curriculum textbook adoption.
I'll second. All right, a motion and a second to approve the grades four through five literacy curriculum textbook adoption. Is there any discussion? All right, all those in favor, please say aye. The opposed, chair votes aye. Onto the approval of the local plan for career technical education.
Ms. White is here. Uh she did present this to you last month, so I I don't know that you'd want her to present again, but I'm sure she's happy to entertain questions. Or if you have things to share, Ms. White? We appreciate you being here.
So if questions, I'll entertain a motion.
I make a motion, we approve the local plan for career and career and tech ed.
I'll second that. All right. You can have it.
Pause up.
Mister Mister Reed has a one minute's time.
Thank you.
Have a motion and a second to approve the local plan for career and technical education. Is there any discussion? Those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
The opposed, chair votes aye. Thank you so much, Ms. White. Approval of the V S B A twenty twenty-four Policy Services Agreement. Uh I will go ahead and move that we approve the V S B A twenty twenty-four Policy Services Agreement. One second. All right, I have a motion and a second to approve the V S B A twenty twenty-four Policy Services Agreement. Any discussion? I'll reiterate that I'm genuinely interested in seeing alternatives, and I am happy to work with you in this boardroom or remotely in order to make that happen. There's, I know, like, I'm no horse in this race. I, we need policies that are in line with code, and if we can find alternatives, then let's explore. For the discussion.
I really don't care for V S B A, but uh this is a good return for the money. Uh that's the only reason I would support it.
I agree. Right. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
The opposed, chair votes no. All right, approval of the V S B A Business Honor Roll Resolution.
So board members, as you're aware, each member, uh excuse me, each year you have the opportunity to recognize a local business through this program, through the V S B A. And this year, we have a, if you wanna.
Yeah.
And I don't know that you need to read it necessarily, but there is a church, Passion Community Church, that donated a significant amount of money to uh resolve lunch debt. And they partnered in other ways. And so we suggested to you that they would be the recipient of this. They're they're awarded a plaque that they're able to display. They are a tremendous partner in our community. You've you've awarded this to other, several other businesses in the past. It's a way for us to just recognize a positive collaboration between uh community group, local schools.
Hope you all approve it, because I already signed it. Um, all right, entertain a motion to approve the uh Business Honor Roll Resolution. And this is for uh Passion Community Church. I'll make the motion. Sound second. Right, I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Um I'll note that I'm a fairly robust defender of the separation of church and state. Um I I've been, I'm gonna vote in the affirmative for this, for the good acts that that organization did. And so I appreciate them. There's nothing worse than a hungry student, and such thing as lunch debt just should not exist, period. And so um I thank them for helping us financially and the students financially to remove that burden. Uh and I look forward to a world in which um they don't need to stroke checks in order for that to happen. So thank you so much. Any more discussions? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, chair votes aye.
And and board members, just to to remind you, what we typically do, the V S B A will will provide a really nice plaque. We usually invite the recipient to come to a board meeting. And oftentimes, they 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 don't even want the recognition, but we usually invite them just to award it. We will do that again.
Right, we still have letter E, and that is the approval of the revised health insurance rates. I move that we approve the revised health insurance rates as presented. A second. All right, we have a motion and a second to approve the revised health insurance rates as presented. Is there any discussion? Uh I'll I'll note that I just wanted to make sure that we knew that we would have to kind of dig deep if we end up um not receiving all the money that we expect from the county. To that end, I will uh stick around for a brief while after this meeting, but then go down to Kerry's Brook to meet with the Board of Supervisors to um help advocate and ensure that we don't have a a gap to close.
But getting text messages, I would suggest that everybody does do that if they can. It's a good idea to hurry up with this and get down to.
Good sign. Uh thank you for that. Um, my wife is watching it and texting me what's happening. That's awesome. Thank you. Any more discussion? All those in favor of approving the revised health insurance rate, insurance rates as presented, please say aye.
Aye.
The opposed, chair votes aye. Right, we are onto our second round of public comments. The expectations are the same as before. You have three minutes, and we ask that you be respectful. If anyone's wishing to speak, let me step forward.
I'm Shannon Garrett Redmond. I'm in the Palmyra District. I have three children in Pluvana County Public Schools, two with I Ps and one with five oh four. And I wasn't gonna speak about the charter school, because it's obvious we can't do anything about it right now anyway. But after hearing the budget report and Ms. Valentine's report, I just wanna say to you all, we've elected you all to be in the head of our house. And we've charged you with the care of our children. And when my house is struggling financially, I don't go buy another house. Sit down and I figure out where money goes. And with three special needs children, that's often a struggle. And I expect you all to not give any more of the county's resources, our time, to the charter school until you've figured out the financial responsibility of our current house. Thank you.
Or anyone else? Right, we will close the second round of public comment, and we will move on to school board member comments. I will start with Dr. Kelly.
Thanks. Um I just wanna thank everyone who turned out um today. I love it anytime we get a chance to um to honor our students and their accomplishments. I like it even more when it happens to be also a day where um the community is galvanized in some way, shape, or form. Um I wanna thank Ms. Berisi. Um we've known each other a good long while. We've had many conversations about this. I encouraged you some odd years ago to talk to the administration about your proposal. I'll note that Joy is a lovely woman. I really enjoy her family, um close with um her brother-in-law. I play games with her kids. She, even though she used the word villain, she she's not a villain. And there are uh there are always good opportunities for conversation about how we can improve. And, you know, if a um separate system doesn't work, how can we find ways to to help special education in Pluvana County? And so I think through public discourse, we ultimately come out stronger. Um and I know that there's been some like, as there is with every issue in this county and and probably every community in America, there's always backlash and um ill-tempered folks on the internet and gross communication. And like, nobody deserves that. Like, we should be addressing these things on the merits and talking about what we can and can't do or can't or can't afford, or about equity, about for whom a given system or proposal, like, who will it benefit? Who won't it benefit? Like, these are really important questions and deserve the light of day. It's why I don't talk about them. Uh it's why I haven't spoken at all uh on social media about this particular issue because it deserves further inquiry and investigation. It deserves a full understanding of the process and the merits. And so I think that we are all a bit too quick to sort of like, not jump in in terms of like public comments here, because that's like the appropriate vehicle, but like we are, we're so quick to villainize. And like, um I hope that we can all take a breath and and talk about root causes and and real needs. And so, you know, I I thank Ms. Berisi for being here. I think Ms. Berisi for for talking and and for um for her proposal. Um I've been as as direct and a- as I can about sort of like where my head's at with regards to charter schools. I'll 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 say them uh again here, just in case anybody's unclear, and I'm happy to be the villain. Is that I fundamentally believe that our school system is small and that we struggle to make ends meet in the first place. I believe that if there are deficits um in our special education or um in other departments, that we are stronger by working through them together. I believe that charter schools make sense in a world of specialized instruction, whether that be a like magnet school for the arts or a tech ed program. I think that there is a place for those in this world. I don't believe that there is a place for them in a community with thirty-three hundred students. I just don't think it's feasible. But I am open to finding ways to get more funding to improve our special education services here. And I want, my goal for this division and the reason that I'm serving on this board is so that um we have a school system and division that every parent is proud to place their students in, trusts that they're going to get the education and services that they deserve, and that we meet every single I E P in five oh four and all needs. Not only by our like legal requirement, but in the full spirit of meeting students where they are. And so I am proud to serve on this board and in this community, and will continue to work with all of you to make sure that we improve and continue getting better every year. Um and I just wanna thank the administration for their hard work during the budget season. We're obviously gonna, um some of us are gonna go down and keep advocating for our schools. It's a tight one and maybe getting even tighter from what I'm hearing, just I have the same information you all do. But I have enjoyed the partnership with the county, advocating for the things that we need to run our annual budget, as well as to improve our our capital improvement projects. And so I remain optimistic and thankful for that partnership. And so, and thank for for you all. Thank you.
Yeah, I won't be as long as James. Uh I thank everybody for, and thank everybody for coming here tonight. I have uh mixed feelings about charter school. My own children. Um I have three, just went to public school one year, and they were homeschooled or private schooled after that, because I didn't like what was going on in public schools, which that's why I'm on the board now. I'd like to make a change in the schools and change for the good. But um, thank you, everybody. That's all.
Yeah, I'd like to thank everybody who came out and spoke. Um thank uh Dr. Gretz for putting together the information. Thanks, Mrs. Berisi, for being, to have the courage. Thanks, Mrs. Berisi, for being, to have the courage to sit there by hearing all the public comments. And I would just like to thank everybody who came out tonight.
I just wanted to say a couple of things. Usually speak during poll com, school member comments, but Mr. Gretz, I just want to confirm that we didn't fire any aides.
Didn't think so.
And we haven't purposely not filled any positions.
No, I didn't think so.
And we didn't just learn about this charter school recently and plan this meeting to try to circumvent the public comment.
No.
I didn't think so. We've had more than a year of knowledge about this charter school. And just so everybody knows, I asked Ms. Berisi myself to not complicate the budget process with this. And I asked Mr. Gretz the same thing. We should hold off on this discussion. We've known about this. It was mentioned in school board meetings a year ago. So moving this meeting a couple hours back was a decision made in January, not a decision made by me. And correct me if I'm wrong, but the learning resources committee didn't ban any books, did they? I didn't think so either. So if you're wondering why I don't respond to your emails is because when you send me emails that are dishonest, I literally ignore them. I'm not going to respond to dishonest emails. I'm not going to respond to emails that call me a segregationist, racist. It's not going to do it. Not going to entertain that nonsense. So if you want to send me an email that's polite and want to have a discussion, even if we don't agree, happy to do it. I'll give you my phone number. We can talk about it. But I'm not going to respond to people's emails that are nasty. I don't have to. And if you don't like it, then don't vote for me. I literally can't be any clearer. Ms. Berisi, thank you. I know what it's like to be the villain in the room myself. Takes a lot of courage. I sit there. So thank you for coming. Thank you for all the other speakers for coming. I'm gonna double down on what Mr. Pollan just said, based on one, the reason why I'm sitting in this chair right now. And two, the fact that I'm going to disagree with you, but I'm also going to agree with you partially. I'm not coming at you. I'm just saying I disagree. Because I use social media as a tool to communicate effectively with the community, both my constituents that elected me to this chair and the community of Flavanna County. Part of the reason why I've been a villain in this room at times is because I feel at times the school board does not effectively communicate. And I don't mind being videotaped as I'm being videotaped right now. This is live streamed, so people can see it on the live stream if they want. They're going to repeat what I say on video. So I'm gonna double down on a couple of things. No, I'm not here on the school board as an informant. No, I am not here to intentionally damage Flavanna County Public Schools. No, I have zero intentions of coming in here and essentially being a wrecking ball for my wife's employer and the school system both of my children are enrolled in. Guys, I'm gonna be real clear. Election season's over. It is well over. All right. And if we don't like it now, I politely say let's buckle up because I still got two years and what, eight months left roughly? But I'm going to handle myself in a professional way and I'm going to end by saying this. I didn't like what was going on four years ago and that's why I spoke the way that I did. And I've already said this plenty of times. I will not back down from what I said. I'm going to go to bat for my kids and I'm going to go to bat for my family. And guess what? I carry this card right here as a reminder. That has my top two reasons why I wanted to run for the school board. Reason number one, wanted to be a voice for the parent teacher perspective. I'm married to a teacher. I can have that perspective. I can add that perspective to the school board. All right, I know others are parents on the school board as well. I like that. I think we need more of that. And on the flip side of the card, number two, more transparent communication within our community. We're not always going to agree on things. I think we can all come to that agreement. I think we can agree. We're not always going to agree. But the fact that we will continue to deal with things like Mr. Pollin just mentioned and the fact that my integrity and my intentions on why I want to be part of the school board continue to be questioned. Guess what? I got really broad shoulders, y'all, and I can shoulder that. But it's unfounded and all it's going to do is continue to divide the five folks on here on this board plus our student representative, because guess what? It impacts him too. And the rest of the community, including those of y'all who sit here tonight. So when we can find a way to work together as adults and professionals and we can find a way to communicate transparently without the agitation that is there with all of election season that is well past us now, that's when we get to start seeing some good stuff happen with this community and the school board. So I hate to end this meeting on a negative note, but it definitely needs to be addressed. And I think we can do a much better job moving forward. Thank you.
All right. The only thing I have left is to remind you all to work on that, that project that we all have. And do by the end of the month and I will entertain a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Make a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Second, motion is second to adjourn. Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye. The opposed, chair votes aye. We are adjourned.